Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's my privilege to have called this officially scheduled Vader City Council meeting to order, which will do at 6:01 PM on this, the 24th day of January 2018. With that, we'll proceed with our roll call. Invite our city clerk to conduct that for us.
Judy Costello.
She has not informed me that she would be absent. Any word to you?
No. Did she talk to you?
Okay. Well, then, council would have to determine if this is considered an excused or unexcused absence.
Unexcused. She's not here, she doesn't call in.
Submit a motion to that.
Oh, I make a motion to consider Ms. Costello unexcused.
You've heard the motions submitted by Mr. Shai to consider Judy Costello's absence as unexcused. Do we have a second for that motion?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Daly. All the papers say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That motion is carried. Proceed.
Jason Daly?
Here.
Joe Shaw?
Here.
Mike Parsons?
Here.
Leona Sander-Hunter?
Here.
And Mayor?
I'll see President. With that, we do have quorum. We'll proceed with our council meeting. Invite all to please rise for our pledge of allegiance. Senator, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With that, we'll proceed with our mayor's report. We noted on the agenda that we felt it would be appropriate to inform members of the council, if you hadn't heard already, that Washington State Department of Ecology has published their draft offer list for cities that have projects that are going to be considered for grant funding. And we are officially on that list. And the recommendation at this preliminary level is that for approximately four million -- I don't have it in front of me, but is it in our packet?
It's not in the packet.
But it's for a little over $4 million, and they're suggesting about $2.4 million in grant funding as a recommendation for that. Putting the cities at this moment in time, loan amount is at about $2.2 million. So that's over 50 percent of grant funding thus far. So that's positive news that it's on the list, and the State Department of Ecology has produced it. So that, in my mind, is a significant milestone and accomplishment. We've done all the appropriate work to reach that level of funding eligibility. So that's a positive way to start 2018. And from my perspective, the objective, just to continue that thought on that subject, is that now, as we move forward, the work will be to augment that grant funding amount. I would hope that we can work and successfully get significantly more grant funding than what that was stated. So now the fun begins. With that, I wanted to point out just something that has brought to our attention. The 36th Annual Luce County Economic Development Council is having their annual banquet. It's scheduled for February 21st, which is a Thursday, at the Jester Auto Museum Event Center in Shehannes, Washington. And it's $45 per person. Elected officials are particularly invited. If anyone may attend, and if there was a group here in Vader that wanted to sponsor a table of eight, you get a small discount to the total price, and that would be $350. So I've attended that a number of times in years past, and it turns out to be worth it as far as networking is concerned. So I invite any council members or members of the public who'd like to participate in such an event to get ahold of our city clerk, and let your interests be known. And that essentially is all that I report at this moment in time. So let's proceed with our council reports. Anything from council members?
I had one thing that brought my attention, and I'm sure we've all noticed the new cell tower flashing light. Since that's on the city tower, do we have some say in the fact that it's bothering the city residents because it's been kind of the talk of?
I think it's always flashed, but it was red.
It was red?
So I was wondering.
It was red, then they changed it to white a year or so ago, and then now it's really, really bright. So the brightness has increased.
I agree. I've noticed it, and it is red.
So I didn't know if that was something that we could address?
I would suspect that we could. I suspect we could.
We can always ask. Historically--
Who owns it?
It's US Cellular owns it. They lease the property from us to put their cell tower on it.
Okay.
I don't know if they would take into account our wishes or not, but I've never heard to ask.
Do you have individuals who'd be willing to articulate in perhaps a written complaint or someone willing to add to the?
Sure. Yeah.
Okay. Well, let's get in touch.
Okay. We've had some people call City Hall as well and ask, I don't know if it's the same people or not, but we could get together and talk about that. The more people we have saying the problem, the more they might listen.
Yep. Okay. Thank you for that. Anything else? With that, let's proceed with the approval of this evening's agenda.
I'll make a motion that we approve the city council meeting agenda for January 24th, 2019.
Did you want to add that one in particular?
No, not today.
Okay. But you've heard the motions submitted by Mr. Parsons to approve the agenda as is currently written. Do we have a second for that motion?
I'll second it.
Seconded by?
Who's this?
All righty. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion is carried. Now, minutes approval for our previous city council meeting.
I make a motion to approve the city council meeting on 1/10/2019 as written.
Okay. Mrs. Hunter submitted a motion to approve the minutes from our previous council meeting as written. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Parsons. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Voucher approvals.
I'll read it.
It's always Joe.
I make a motion to approve the 2018 extended period of $16,093.40 for a 2018 December total of $89,886.16. And for the end of January 2019, amount of $19,846.14 for a January 2019 total of $40,176.23.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Shai. Now, you've heard the motion submitted before you to approve those voucher totals as noted. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Hunter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion carries. Special reports?
As I was sitting there, I realized I neglected to remind either of those committees that they were on the agenda, so I don't see any representatives from them, so.
That's a bummer, because I know that they were.
I could, as far as the planning committee, I was at the meeting, and they are moving forward. And Gary Cooper, Cooper, yep, he was saying that he's thinking that it should be able to get the plan done in the next six months.
Is that right?
Definitely. So they're moving forward.
Okay. Well, that's a good vicarious report. Well, perhaps in that note, I could give a brief overview report of the last park board meeting, because I was present at that meeting. And also present was Gary Cooper, our city planner, who introduced to those present Kim Neely, I believe, Mr.?
Kim Southers.
Southers, who is with the state agency out of Olympia that helps small cities like ours submit grant applications for funding for park development. And it was, it was unanimous, where all five of our park board members were present. It was energetic, enthusiastic, and this gala gave such an upbeat and positive report, because I took her personally to both parks, and she was struck by the potential that the city of Vader Parks has. She is a believer in it, and she is not over our region. There's an individual by the name of Rory Calhoun, who is over this area, but she said that she is so enthused by the potential here that she's going to work with the city personally in conjunction with Rory Calhoun to walk our way through grant programs. And so she shared her thoughts and insights with the park board, and it was a contagious aura of enthusiasm. So she's moving ahead post haste with application assistance for the city of Vader. And we have almost $50,000 as seed money, which is necessary to, because you can get five times, that's one-fifth of what you need, so you could get five times that amount. And she has a plan that you could actually increase the increments there if you do it on an extended basis. It's complicated, but so there was added enthusiasm and energy from that presentation. So I wouldn't doubt that if we invited her to come and assist and give a report to the council, that she wouldn't do it. Very service and public minded. So that was part of what you would have heard had they come tonight.
I also know that the park board had a workshop on Saturday.
Oh, that's amazing.
Yeah, that was, from what I hear, it was very productive. There was a lot of--
There was a follow-up.
Yeah, even beyond that meeting, they had a workshop too, and it was very productive, and they shared a lot of ideas, and a lot of, a lot of energy in that, in that board.
Thank you for that follow-up. Okay, then with that, I guess we will now proceed with our city business. Item number one, council, is to consider version two of ordinance 2018-05, the business license update. As you know, it's an ongoing concern for business owners within our community and our need to come into compliance with state law. Hopefully, we had a chance to review this, and be able to take some decisive.
I move to adopt ordinance 2018-05, amending the Vader Business License Code, repealing ordinance number 2011-05 in its entirety and replacing it with an updated chapter on business licensing, providing, providing for the issuance and regulation of business licenses for the city of Vader, adopting the state mandated updates in accordance with RCW 35.90.090, defining engaging in business as required by the state law, providing an exemption for certain business activities, providing the waiver of license fees as mandated by state law, providing for enforcement and penalties of violations of said ordinance, and providing due process for licensees.
Okay, well, that's a mouthful, huh? It must have been written by an attorney.
So what did all that mean?
That means that this one in your hands, that's, that's the one that he's--
Yes, but before we ask that question, we need to present the motion. As you've noted, Mr. Parsons has submitted a motion to approve ordinance 2018-05 as read. So do we have a second for that motion?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Shai. Okay, now, an opportunity for additional council comments.
I just like to put on record that I still, I mean, you know, I just picked it up this afternoon, so did I go through it thoroughly, so I kind of glazed through it. But I'm still going to stand with what I decided last time. I think it's all overkill. I think it's just too material, it's too confusing, it's too, it's just too many words. I think to just add what we had to add from what the state required, and to keep the old one. But, you know, I kind of come from that, if it ain't, well, then fix it, you know? Sorry, that's, you know? So I just want to, you know, I just want to say that I just think I feel that it's overkill, more than what is necessary. And confusing, just confusing.
I think our other one was broken. It didn't allow, it didn't allow businesses an appeal process if they were denied for some reason, and this one does.
Okay, was there, would that, did that situation ever come up?
Did it yet? No, not, not with me, but that doesn't mean that we shouldn't protect ourselves against that.
Especially if we move forward towards a college industry, it's a question. And first, the state mandate, there'd be a lot of verbiage in it. But we did clarify the concerns about clerk being saddled with burdens with the enforcement elements of it.
It did, it did. And I understand, you know, well, it did for Altria, it found all the green writing and the lines and everything. And it did eliminate, which I hope gets Jill out of the hot seat.
Yes.
I mean, I know that I'm going to lose vote anyway, and I hope it does get you out of the hot seat.
Boy, I would make sure that it does.
Pardon me?
You have my assurances as well.
But I just wanted to, on record, that I still think it's, it's just, it's just a lot of words.
Any other council comments?
Even the motion is a lot of words.
Amen.
Well, if there are none, then it doesn't matter to a vote. All in favor of said motion, say aye.
Aye.
And the opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, by the audible count, it was three council members in favor, one in opposition. So that motion does carry. Thank you. I personally am grateful to your poison and cautious analysis of this ordinance and your actions.
So now that means that we can start, I gotta file my business applications.
November, or February 5th is when this will, this ordinance will be enacted. So, yep, that's when we'll send out notices and remind everybody and--
Okay, all right. With that, then item number two, council to discuss the update to the employee rate schedule, which has been an ongoing discussion, you're well aware. And this is motivated by the, by the sensitivity that I have with regard to our employees, the awareness I have of their salary, the awareness I have of the competition that's out there, and the awareness I have of our public or waste treatment plant, part-time employees, his input and concerns. So with that, our city clerk has prepared what I think is a remarkable analysis of three options that I hope that you've had a chance to assimilate, given the time that we've expended on this over the past six weeks or so. Not that that's too much time, I'm not inferring that, but I hope this gives you some options. And I know that, speaking for myself, I do have an option that I feel comfortable in recommending. I know that our city clerk does as well, and as much as I've discussed all of the elements of this with her. And reflective of the input I've gotten from our employees. So, and if any council members wants to inquire which one I would suggest, then feel free. I don't want to impose that opinion on your deliberations at the outset.
Can I get a little clarification?
Absolutely.
And I'm going to use you, only because you're the first one to charge.
Okay, that's fine.
I'm a little confused on the numbers, so if you go with the original one, it says alleyway 2373, and then step seven says 2373 up on the top right corner. If you turn to version one, it says, in the blue box, it says 4653 per hour. And then up in the step seven, in the gray box in the top right, it says 2373.
Oh, I think I forgot to update that box.
Then if you go to version--
What it looks like.
Two, the box is matching in with the 2353.
Yes, it looks like on version one, I just made an error there and didn't put the new, the numbers in those top boxes should be the same on all three versions, version one, version two, and version three. They should all be the same. It looks like version two and three got it right, but version one, I neglected to go back and update the actual numbers.
Well, and version three, that says 25, 26, and then up in the top, it says 2653. And all the steps are different, I'm highlighting different places.
Yes, that's correct. That's the three different versions. So what, so what you're looking at, the original version is, of course, the way that you guys have approved it as of the budget of 2019, what you guys approved at the end of 2018 there, that's the way it is right now. The original is, is nothing's changed, that's what it is right now. The other three versions are options for implementing the raises in three different ways, applying it to the step schedule three different ways. So, because we don't have a policy in place to explain how it's going to do the increases, and how any increases would affect the salary schedule. So the first version is if we took every employee at the same step that they're at right now on this original scale, on the original salary schedule, and we just changed the numbers in the salary schedule and updated them. Now, I'm sorry that I didn't, that I made an error there on those boxes.
I just was confused by all the different numbers.
Yeah. So that was, so that was version one, is if we plugged all the employees in and just updated the numbers.
Okay.
And everybody stayed at the same step.
So then on version three--
So then on version--
On version three, it's supposed to be 25, 26, or 2653, for step seven.
Let's see.
Or does it put you in step?
No, those are, those are right. So then, look, look at version two. You see, those have the right numbers plugged in, but you see the boxes have moved, because version two is moving each employee to be placed in the actual step that they would be on normally if everybody started at step number when they got hired, and you counted how long they've been with the company, with the city, that that's the step that they would be on. The dotted one is where they would start at the beginning of the year, and then the solid block is where they would go up to when they hit their anniversary date.
Okay, but at the last meeting, you said their deputy employee started between step five and step six.
Right.
So that would put her--
Right, but I'm saying, version two is showing, what if we put her back, put everybody back to where they actually are? She's only been with the company between six and nine months, so she technically, if we put her back to where she is based on her actual time on the job, and not looking at the numbers at all as far as how much she's getting paid, if we just looked at the nut, at the steps, she would be starting at step two at the beginning of the year, and then when she hits her anniversary, she would go up to step three. So this is, and that's the same with the waste treatment operator. He started partway through the year. John scheduled a couple works labor and mine, we are both on the right step for how long we've been at the job, we're already there. So ours didn't change, but theirs would.
This rate monitor, wastewater treatment offering assistant?
Assistant. That one doesn't move, that one stays at that rate, and he doesn't move, because it's only two hours a week. And so that's been agreed upon separately, that he's just going to stay at that. He doesn't have any certification or anything that's required, so he doesn't get to move up the scale, he just does a few hours a week to help out there for that at a rate. So then step, then version three is if we took the same pay schedule with the updated numbers in it, and instead of looking at how long somebody's been here, if we started each person at the step that's closest to where their pay is right now, without making them go down in pay, just the closest, and that's plugging those numbers in. So that would bump, like me, a city clerk, that would bump me back to step five, because that's the closest to my current pay rate without dropping my pay rate. So that's just another way, because the mayor and I were talking about, I said, "Mayor, I don't know how to give numbers to the council, because I don't know how this would apply, you know, how to apply this." And so we talked about some different ways to apply, and these are the three options that we came up with. If somebody has another idea of a different way to look at it, I'd be more than happy to, but this is what the mayor and I came up with as far as three different options. Now, you see, the final page shows a comparison of all those options and what that would mean for the salary or for the budget. So if you look at that top chart there, the bottom numbers was just part of my calculating, so that doesn't really mean anything, but that chart up there at the top, the first column, 2019 adopted, that's the adopt, that's the amount that the city has approved floor salaries already, just without any changes. If we did version one, you see the next column would affect the budget by increasing it $24,963 if we did that first version. And then the, you know, three lines above that show how much comes out of the current fund, how much of that would come out of the street fund, and how much would come out of sewer fund, which is the way it's set up now. Then you see version two would affect the budget totally $15,370, and then version three would affect the budget $9,550. I know it's complicated, and I know it's confusing.
If I hadn't been gone on to come in earlier and ask--
That's fine, that's fine.
--you to complain, so I apologize for the time.
Did you notice that those three funds were up, the funds would come out of, the current fund, revenue, the street fund, and then the sewer fund. In fact, there's a sense. We did have a member of the community who'd like to make a comment. Would you want to?
Is this more than the dollar an hour that you, this looks like it's more than the dollar an hour that you were suggesting for December.
It depends on which--
On all of them, but they're more than the dollar.
Yes, these are all more than a dollar an hour. Originally, he suggested a dollar an hour, but then the second time it was brought up, it was, what we did was, we actually compared the salaries of all the employees to just other cities in the state that are within the same range in size.
Population.
Yeah, population. And, and then kind of came up with an average and suggested those averages, and that's this chart here that shows what the changes. This is this schedule that we have now, which is based on the 2015 approved numbers, which is based on the 2015 averages, actually 2014 averages. And this is based on the 2018 averages, and this is what's been proposed.
Which version is this, man?
The pink one is the proposed version, what they're, what we're proposing that you would increase the rates to.
Is it version one?
Oh, that's, that's just, that's not the version. The versions are how to apply, if you adopted these pay increases, how would we apply those pay increases? Would we keep people at the same step? Would we adjust the step they're on based on their longevity? Would we adjust the step that they're on based on what's closest to the salary that they're at right now? Just how to implement this amount. So the pink is what's being proposed, and then council doesn't have to decide both of those at the same time. You can say, "Yeah, we want to pay you guys at the pink, what the pink says, but how we go about doing it, we need to talk more about how to get there." What council did back in 2015 was they decided to make it a five-year plan to get us up to those numbers, because the jump between what we were getting paid and what they wanted to pay us was so large that our budget couldn't handle it at that point. So they put together a plan, like these versions that you see, that, that did incremental steps for five years. It hasn't hit the end of that five years, we're still working to get there with some a year and a half ago, but in the meantime, we're supposed to be looking at the pay schedule and making adjustments to it. It says here on a yearly basis, we haven't done it since 2015, but--
And can the budget?
Well, as, the budget can absorb it, in my opinion, the version three, I think the budget can absorb, can absorb that. In my opinion, the version three, I think the budget can absorb that. The other versions will be a little bit trickier to absorb. But you see, the majority of the pay, if you look on that last page, the majority of those amounts are sewer, come out of the sewer budget, and the sewer does have the funds to cover any one of these versions. So, it's just a matter of what council decides they want to.
How come it seems like so much gets pulled out of the sewer when we owe so much to the sewer? Yet, it seems like so much gets pulled out of the sewer.
Well, we're working in a bit of a surplus right now because as we've been trying to get up to where we need to be to help pay for the upgrade that we've needed to do, we've been working slowly over the years to increase the rate so that we do have the money that we're set aside, that we're supposed to have set aside for emergency, but also to help soften the impact of the loan that we're going to need for this 2.2 million that we know we have half of it that's grant, but the 2.2 that will be loaned. And then that also improves the amount of loans that we can get because we have, our rates are higher than, rather than lower. So, it saves us money in the long run.
We don't owe it yet.
Yeah, we don't owe, we will be...
We've got a broken-down car, and we know we're going to have to buy a new car.
We know that it's gonna be, we'll get more grant money for having higher rates. And so, right now, we're working, we're bringing in more money than we need to run the system right at this second. But if you look at the projections and you spread them out over, you know, fifteen, twenty years, you see that if you do rate increases earlier, it makes less of an impact on how high the rates have to go in the future to cover the same amount of money.
Well, I guess that's kind of my question, why we keep pulling out of the sewer fund? Because we know it could end up like this.
Well, the, what's, the amount that's determined out of, what comes out of each fund is by how much work each person does in each area. And so, one of the biggest jumps is the waste treatment operator, and that can only be paid for out of the sewer fund. We don't have a choice. He has to be paid out of the sewer fund. John gets paid partially out of the sewer fund for his work, a certain percentage of his work. We do evaluations every couple of years to see how much work they're actually, we're actually doing, each of us is actually doing. We have to track it for a couple of months at a time and then go through, and there are how many hours spent. And we have to do that to keep the auditors happy. And so, like, a lot of Tammy's budget is out of the sewer fund because she mainly does sewer billing. That's her main job. And a portion of mine comes out of sewer as well, because part of my job is sewer. So, you see, everybody's salary at some, you see that the sewer is a large part of what we do around here. And so, that's why such a high percentage comes out of the sewer.
That's a whole lot of garbage that'll make your head spin.
I know.
Because the...
Actually, I wonder if I want...
Good, okay. We've talked about this issue of why the sewer raise. We had to raise them, and why that's accumulating almost a quarter of a million dollars that we have that we're gonna be able to apply towards this sewer renovation project. But that funding is available for any work to be done. And as we went over when Kathy Reed was here, just to say it one more time, that if you don't have your sewer rates at a certain level, you're not going to get a higher level of grant participation. So, the state looks at that. So, if we were sitting where we were five years ago, that you'd get less grant funding. It's just formula they use. And so, we're right now at a prime level. And they can see that we have done our civil duty as elected officials to put ourselves in that position. So, does that make sense?
Yeah, I...
We've said it before. We do have two comments from the members of the public.
You're not mandated to give raises. And when you compare to other cities, you're not looking at the whole picture. You're not looking at the revenue those other cities come in, or their budgets of the other cities. You can't compare to Winlock. It's got over a million-dollar budget, and it has a lot more revenue. And in addition, overwhelmingly, the fifty-plus people I talked to on Monday at two, they were against any raises other than for John, the public works guy. Now, if you don't care what the people in the city think, then disregard that. But the overwhelming majority, only two people were for it. And most of the people said, "Well, I see John out about, and I know he's a hard worker, and I think he needs a raise." But they were overwhelmingly, I guess, for any raises for the city workers. So, take that as you will. It was fifty-plus houses, and it was random. Yeah, I didn't, I don't know. Would they be against, Mary's wife?
Sure.
Would they be against themselves receiving a raise? Actually, most of them were low-income, other than, more than the ten or eleven. And they said, they weren't against raises in a general rule. But when they looked at the sheet, the sheet handed out the last time, and they looked at the amount of money they're already receiving, I gave each person that one and one, that printout that she handed out last time. This one here. I showed this to each person, what the current levels are and what the projected levels would be if they got raises. It was pink. Mine's not pink. And when they looked at that, they thought they were well compensated for the size of labor, the amount of our revenue, and the amount of our budget. And I also had a copy of what our budgets were. So, this was not just, oh, a yes or no, like on Facebook, yes or no? Because that can be flippant. But this was, here's what they are now, how do you feel? And I recorded it with a yes or no, and I didn't know any of these people. So, when you come, you're meeting them. Well, get on, talk to them now. Two of them are across the street from you. Well, two of them are across the street, several live around Joe, a couple live around Mike. Get on, talk to them.
Excellent. Do you have a comment?
How many employees, paying employees, is here in Vader? There's one. There's four. Okay.
Two parts, then.
Will there ever be a cap on the sewer? On what you can raise, you know, the sewer, because...
That's a good question. I believe that down the road, maybe in two years, we will hopefully stabilize. And we will know exactly what over the long term. Although, those things are hard to quantify. My hope is that, yes, you would, and then you could have some stability. But we can't fool ourselves in thinking we're gonna be thrilled with the ultimate cost of that waste treatment upgrade. So... Yeah, however, you know, it's council deliberation, so I'm anxious to... I don't want to sway the council's legislative anxious too much. But I am gravitating towards one of the versions that I believe our employees have indicated to me, at least in the ways that they have, that would be satisfactory. And that's version three, the third version. And I know that I'm pretty plugged into the community, and I imagine if I knocked on fifty-two doors, and I asked if they wanted to support a pay raise for anybody, I suppose I could respond like they did too. But I also know, representing the elected council members as the city administrator, that we have, in my lengthy experience, gone through, what a dozen different employees, maybe more. And right now, we have some of the finest employees that I have experienced. And they, they're wonderful. They weren't begging for a pay increase. But I think, given the facts that you received, that they're operating just barely above the newly established minimum raise in the state of Washington. And it is even three years behind the current salary structure in small cities. And I agree with one of the residents' comments, that it's not wise to compare your neighboring cities in any regard because there are no two cities exactly the same. I believe that version three is a very modest increase. It's a reflection of my sentiments about their caliber, their quality of service they're rendering. And the majority of it comes from the sewer fund, which is not lacking in, at this moment in time, the capacity to cover that. So, that's...
And John is spending the forty hours, and Reed stood with that?
Yeah, so that's also, we've talked about increasing hours that it's up to the public, and our staff is, has no qualms about...
Their office will be open till 3:30?
We could work out the schedule.
Are you opening the office?
Comment from the public.
You're trying to make that decision, that you're opening the office? Because that was a complaint that I heard.
Extended hours, yeah.
Until, I'm sorry, what was that then, Mr.?
Extended hours, that's increased hours that's available for the public. Now, we haven't discussed it specifically, but I think we could arrive at that probably fairly quickly. But, so, I could share that with you as well. So, I thank Jill for taking the time to crunch these members.
I have another question.
Continued commentary?
Yeah.
Before you vote on this, please keep in mind that all but two people identify as low-income. All but two. And one of them, that said she wasn't, I know is. So, you're putting these raises on the backs of people who get social security or are minimum wage and do not make anywhere near these wages. Not that that should be compared, but I'm just telling you, you're putting these raises on their backs. And these people are not underpaid in any way if you compare, just look at their wages overall. Fifty thousand dollars a year, that's a decent wage. It's over low-income. You know, so, please keep in mind of the citizens that you have here and what they make and what you're asking them to pay.
Thank you. All righty, well, I'll wait whatever council feedback, if you're prompted to share.
Well, I do, I feel that they need a raise. Just because it's hard to find good workers. I go through forty employees a year, and you can roll your eyes all you want, but it's hard to find good employees. And when you find a good employee, you wanna keep him happy, and you wanna make sure that they're taken care of so that you don't have to try to find another one and go through all of the training and all of the background. It's just miserable. And I also think that the comment about similar populations, but different incomes, revenues, I think that that's, it's, that even isn't fair. Because if we had all the money that we ever needed with a whole bunch of revenue, it would make Jill's job even easier than... Because I'm sure half of your time is working on things, trying to change so that we can save a buck here or save a buck there. And, I mean, when I, all I can do is compare it to myself. And when I have money, it's easy to, it's easy to run my business. When my business is broke, it's hard to run my business. I'm working even harder than I do during the off-season to take care of stuff. So, I don't, I don't know that the revenue is a determining factor. I think the amount of people that we have to deal with, I think population is the main comparing factor.
Well, what do you think this might come from?
Excuse me?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, pardon me. This gentleman...
Is there any evidence showing that if you pay an employee more, that they're gonna stick around and you won't have to go through so many?
All of us. I can respond to that.
I've got it.
To manage the employees, yeah. Part of this conversation initiated because of our relatively newly hired waste treatment, a part-time employee. Because he accepted this job despite the fact that it's considerably, he's been paid considerably less than anywhere else that is out there for comparable service. And, but he was responsive to the situation, and he was willing to do it. But he approached me and indicated that, you know, this is something I would hope the council would consider. So, and my experience here in the city of Vader is that, yes, it is difficult. And because they can draw to other locations and get more.
But did he say that he would no longer work there if he didn't receive the raise?
Yes, he said that that would likely, he'd have to give that serious consideration. So, that, I'm being honest with you. So, yeah. Might have that just been intended.
And really, all of us, all of us go to work to make money. And if we can't, that's what we're there for. And if we can't make enough money, then we're gonna go somewhere else. I mean, you can...
It works exactly.
Yeah, I do raises all the time, too. And it's kinda like, now we're paying twelve dollars for a dishwasher that two years ago, we were paying nine, nine, nine fifty. Everybody that was paid more than that person now thinks that they're paid, should be paid more than that person now. And it's just, it's the trickle-down effect kind of thing. Because, but, but these people are running a city. I mean, it's not easy, and there's not a lot of people that have this know-how or the will or the want to do it. So, I think it's worth their...
Thank you. Boy, that's a thought that I've just been holding back. Anybody who thinks that their job that these employees are doing is easy, really doesn't know what their opinion is. But they would sit in their seats for an hour and think, "I'm gonna pay this much for what I've got to be aware of." And the pressures that are meant to get audited, and everything's got to be squeaky clean and under the pressures of the public that most people would wither under because it's just the nature of public service. So, these, it's a pretty remarkable thing. When you get out of your foxhole and you get out there and see in real life what they do, I echo that sentiment. I would never do their job for fifteen dollars an hour, never. I'd flip hamburgers for twelve bucks.
Right, and that's what goes through people's minds because that's what we're, that's kind of what we're dealing with.
Okay. When I look at, I've been thinking about this, you know, comparing us to other cities with regard to, you know, they get, they have a bigger budget than us. We don't have a, as big a budget. But they're still our competition, right? Right? Because these, we have our people, our employees here that are, that have grown up, as you say, with us and have become experienced. If they leave, who will we replace them with? Especially if our wages are below average. Well, we'll get the entry-level person again, right? And then where will we be at that point? What we're training, we're always training the next person who's going to then just leave and go to...
Yeah, we're training.
The next person, you know, is that what we want for Vader? Do we always wanna be having the lowest-paid person that's willing to do that job? You know, it's just an observation.
Well, personally speaking, my husband and I live on social security disability, and I could live with version three. And I wish, I could say version one, I really do, you know? But I could live with version three.
I think it's easiest on the budget.
It's easiest on the budget, yeah.
Yeah, I was, I went through, and I was adding up version three. I was like, does it really add up to that much a year? And I went through and I added up the totals and multiplied by the hours in a year. And sure enough, it does. All those, you know, seventy cents, twenty cents, you know, an hour, it adds up. Those are the, those are the initial raises. It'd be a seventy-cent raise, a twenty-cent raise, a dollar and ten. You know, so these are not, not much, really.
I'm comfortable, and I believe that they would be grateful for that demonstration.
And the other thing that I like is that... And the other thing that I, I like is that there's, they can see in the future that there is room for growth within the city, that they're not up against the wall, right? I don't think anyone in a job wants to think that, that they're done, right? That they want to know that there's a future if they, if they continue excellent performance within the city.
Because personally, when I worked, if I didn't get a yearly raise, I was not a half a camper. You know what, there, I earned it, I put another year in with that company. I earned that raise, so, yeah.
The comment from the public?
Yep.
The wastewater treatment superintendent in Winlock is twenty-two dollars an hour. Quite a bit less than what you're suggesting for the one that we have here. He's only been here six months and he knew what it was when he started. So, for him to now threaten to say, well, I'm going to walk because it's not what I want, that, that seems unreasonable. I believe the clerk said when she first brought this up, that she was okay, she felt she was well compensated. And none of you seem to be considering that. You're also not considering of what the people that you represent want. And I don't understand that because you work for them.
They're not sitting here, by the way.
No, but, but we do make...
Hold on, hold on. Hold on. To go out and to ask someone point-blank, do you think someone should get a raise? You're going to get an answer that's no. That's, that's everyone's, that's everyone's first reaction. If you sit here and you look through all these numbers and you work here for six, eight years with it, and, and work on the budget and everything, you see these things and you have a different opinion. We are elected because we look at all of that stuff and create an opinion based on all of the facts. They do not have all of the facts. If they sat here, they might have a different decision. A lot of people come up here and sit here and when they get elected, they say, I'm going to be like this. I'm going to do these things. And then they get up here and they change their mind and they act differently once they see all the information. I could give you names of people that sit up here and have acted differently after they're elected than before they were elected. So, I don't want to discount what fifty-two households say, but I'm here with all the information and they're not. And I'm going to make the best decision for the city that I think I can make.
I understand.
Excuse me, uh, oh, can...
No, I understand that and I appreciate it. However, it wasn't just a simple question, there was dialogue. So, and these people weren't being fair. I don't want you to think that they were just being mean or...
I'm not.
And, and I tried to give them as much information as I was given by the city. So, it wasn't a rash decision on their part just to say no. And a couple people said, gave reasons why, that I haven't actually shared with you. But still, don't discount their feelings just because they're not sitting in your seat. So, a lot of them have been working for years.
Okay, great. Hey, I appreciate the council's willingness to embrace input from members of the public. This isn't necessary on your part, as you, I think, well know. But you're a very responsive and solicitous council and I'm impressed. But, and I did hear some concern about the comparing our part-time waste treatment operator with that of Winlock. I obviously looked into that situation too, it's very complicated and I think it's unwise to do that analysis because of some extenuating information and circumstances between Winlock and the city of Vator. So, but with that, a thank to the council's deliberation. As the moderator of this...
I feel as were deliberated.
Yes. I think you're doing a fantastic job. So, is there...
I'll make a motion that we go with version three.
Okay, we've heard it.
The pay increase proposal.
Mr. Parsons to approve pay scale as... negotiated in number three.
Can I ask for some clarification on that motion?
Yes.
There's kind of three aspects to, to this. You know, approving the pay rate increase as proposed, implementing it by version three, by using version three, and then the date of starting of the implementation, which in your paperwork is pretty much set up to implement it as of February first. So, is that, is that what you're stating? That's the way it's proposed there in the paperwork? I just want to be clear that that's what you're proposing.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so that motion includes the, the potential implementation effective February first. That motion, you kept your list in second? Do we have a second for that motion?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Shaw. Additional thoughts or commentary? Hearing none, let's put it matter to a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, I heard that vote to be unanimous. And thank you, members of the council. It shows sensitivity, insight and awareness of what's in the best sense for the city of Vator.
I would like to let council know that this will require an ordinance to be presented to you with what you have approved. And so there will be, I'll have that at the next meeting for you now that we know what it is. Uh, we've never actually solidified our pay rate schedule in either a resolution or an ordinance, which in two thousand and fifteen didn't know we needed to do that. And so, we will be implementing that in the proper way. We'll present that to you at the next council meeting with what you have requested in your motion. So, approved in the motion.
Excellent. Thank you for that. So, stay tuned.
Is that halfway?
Yeah.
Oh, my gosh.
All right, number three, council to discuss options for code enforcement officer. I just put that back on there because I want to ensure to the council that that is an ongoing question, as you're aware. And I think that I may have mentioned that prior to the last council meeting, we did receive a notice from the city of Chehalis that they have analyzed the option that they've been considering in which they would allow small cities to contract for their services. They did do the hiring, but they indicated they would. They've got now a full-time inspector slash planner plus a part-time assistant planner and inspector. And they're functioning as one would imagine. But the community leaders have made the decision that they're not feeling like they want to expand the services that they currently have. So, they've withdrawn their offer to, for consideration for any small city. So, that was, but they did mention that we, on Tuesday of last week, when we brought this letter, that there had been an individual who submitted an application who was interested in some part-time inspection services for a community. We don't have his name or where he lives and what the particulars might mean, but at least they said they were going to share that man's individual name. So, um, my current, current perspective is that I'm satisfied with our current billing inspector. He charges over fifty dollars an hour.
For code enforcement?
For code enforcement. And he's getting more dependable. His billing practices are, billing practices are still a work in progress process. So, absent any external motivation, I'm satisfied with where we're at. So, that's my perspective on options for code enforcement officer. Any thoughts or feelings, I might invite you to share them with me, either now or at any time that's your convenience.
Are you going to follow through on this possibility of this part-time?
The person up in Chehalis? Yes, the council is, has recommended I do that.
At least get some information on them, yeah?
Yes, I will do that. And I will bring what I learned to our next council meeting. Okay, and then with that, let's proceed with item number four. Council to consider or continue your discussion on the senior slash disabled low-income sewer rates. So, I understood that, maybe I misunderstood it, but I thought that there might have been a workshop that was going to take place on that subject matter. Did it?
It's not one set up at the last meeting, or...
Didn't, didn't.
It was set up as an option, but I don't think council decided to do it.
Okay. Well, then I would turn the topic over to the council for your continuing deliberation. We had three options, I remember that distinctly. That chart that you prepared and that we were, were in the analysis that you provided?
I provided the CDPG chart that showed where the low-income rates were at and that, that's the chart that has been approved by council in our ordinances to, to set the rate at. We use that chart for determining if somebody qualifies.
That seemed like something to, as a place to start talking about it.
I think some of the biggest questions I had in my mind was that we still, had we decided, if council decided if they wanted to include disability status as, as a qualifying factor for the lower rate. That was one thing that was kind of left on the table. And, and I think, did, did council still want to continue using the same chart? Or did they want to go up or down or make any changes to that for qualifications?
I, I, uh, I know that I want to see...
I have more information, I don't have any of that information.
Was this last week?
It was, uh, two weeks ago, the last council meeting.
I missed that one.
Yeah.
The information, I think, was in your packet, but you didn't, weren't here to hear the discussion. So, kind of most of the discussion last time was around the disability and how we determine and some people felt that our, our, uh, form that we fill out was in, asking too many questions which we provided that the council could look at to see. And, and no one raised any issues actually. I think the only guy you looked at it and said, he thought it was reasonable.
Have you seen anything invasive or rude or...
I'd like to see permanent disability added to it and instead of just the sixty-two being a qualifier, I think that permanent disability would be another qualifier for it. Um, and then, I don't remember the numbers and I wish I had it with me, but I know that we, I was wanting to, it's kind of reverse things. Do you want to lower it a little bit?
Make it a little bit easier to qualify for.
But I think we were right on where, we were pretty close to where it was, um, state, statewide. So...
It just really upset me to comment at the last meeting, not the comment, but the fact that, um, you made the comment that not everybody puts down all the incomes in the household. And that is just, not, not your comment, but the fact that people would expect this and cheat on it has really bugged me.
Oh, gosh. Come on.
You know, really, I mean, it's, you know, so one of them's on disability. Okay, take me for example. My husband's on disability and he will always be on disability. There's, there's no ifs, ands, and buts about it. And I could use his income and...
Not mention yours.
Put this down and qualify and then go to work and not put that down. Why would somebody do that? I don't, that just, that just really makes me angry every time I think about it.
You know?
People like to get away with stuff.
Oh, my gosh.
I, I was a FEMA inspector during Katrina and I went to the same house to inspect that same house for five different people putting a claim in on that house. And luckily, I was the same inspector. But every time I'd go there, is John here? Yeah, John, hey, he's here for you today. And so, unfortunately, yes.
We do have a couple of members of the public, yes, my second.
The other towns around here, I know you don't want to compare all the towns, but other towns around here is, is about fifteen hundred and they did include this permanent disability. And the form was very similar to what ours is. It didn't seem to be too, and honestly, we don't know really how it's gonna end. I mean, of course, people are gonna cheat. What's to lose?
You couldn't cheat to get low income, to get a discount? I mean, if you don't need it, good lord, what is wrong with people? And yes, I have those colored glasses.
You're a very nice person.
Yes, you are. You're a very nice person.
I wish you more than that, Lee.
Yeah, and by the way, my whole vacation stuff, really, no, nobody... But somebody, I even asked my girlfriend, would you do this? And they both said no.
Oh, they're lying.
The reason I come down here today was the sewer and the disability. I'm single, I'm disabled, I live by myself. Every month, I give ten percent of my check just for sewer. I don't think that's fair. Whether you're permanently disabled or disabled, you're still getting the same amount of money. You're still hurting. I'm down here asking you for help.
Did you file one of these? Did you...
I come in. I'm not sixty-two years of age. So, therefore, I am not qualified.
Okay, and that's what you're saying?
That's what we're trying to...
My water. I go, I'm kind of almost glad Vator lost its water rates because when I go in there, their form, which I had brought in, has to have a copy, says low-income senior citizen disabled. They give me a break on my water. I'm sorry, I am poor and I am asking for help. There are many poor people out there that need that help.
So, so they have a, a form that has all that stuff on there?
Yes.
So, I want to look at that and then, um, maybe we can make this simple and follow what the water's doing since people are applying for it already.
And, you know, another thing, the fact that I had to come down here to bring my issue to it, that I felt there was no other, I had asked that front desk for the application. I didn't qualify, I wasn't old enough. So, the only option I really had was to come down here and voice my opinions.
Well, this was on the agenda for the council before we came...
I didn't know this, I'm new here, so I don't know what's all going on.
The situation I know is, the council's aware of.
And we agree with you. And we talked about, we had to change that fact because they can be disabled and not be sixty-two.
Yeah, to me, it looks like discrimination against the disabled.
Well, yeah. There's an argument to be made and that's why the council is having this discussion.
We allow disabled, it's under, under sixty-two or sixty is the discrimination, I guess, if you were to say that we're discriminating now. We're discriminating against young people.
Not that over sixty-two is old.
Does that mean, sort of, that...
Just, just can stop.
Thank you for coming. It's your voice, it's valuable.
Well, thank you.
All right.
So...
So, it sounds like so far you want to see what the water company uses their form?
Yep.
And that as a to-do? Any other additional information? Council wants me to get together for you or...
No, I'd like to compare what the water has to what we have for the sewer. Because I agree, you can be disabled and not be sixty-two and you're going to still get that little check.
Okay?
Okay.
And make sure we get your information so that way we implement this and we get you on it.
All right. Well, that sounds like we have some marching orders. We will ensure that this topic is on the next council meeting and we'll have any information hopefully that can be used to continue...
And that is how you get things done when you've got an issue. You come down here and talk to us. It works the best.
Or, my phone number's on there, but I never get a phone call from anybody.
Nobody likes you.
I know. It's okay.
That's what we do either.
I'm a bully.
We also try to tell people at the window that they can, if they can't come, they can write a letter and that will be presented to council as well.
Well, alrighty, then thank you for that. With that, I believe concludes that agenda item. So, now let's proceed with the public comment. comment.
Like, I don't wanna hear it anyway.
Is that you?
I'm just feeling quite, you've been there some, and away.
We have two people on, first is Cindy Radcliffe.
Now, you have three minutes, and then...
Cindy Radcliffe, Ten Twenty Seventh Street. The five council seats up here represent the people of the city. So, you're supposed to work on behalf of and for the citizens of the city. I understand that you sit up there and you don't get paid, but you knew that going into this. So, I, I would ask that you start acting like you represent them. Get out and find out who they are, talk to them on a regular basis. I realize it was only fifty-two or fifty-four people that I talked to this week, but I didn't know any of them, and if you'd have started knowing their situation, maybe you would act a little bit differently. Maybe you'd make the same decisions you made tonight, but maybe you would start considering the people that have to pay for these things that you keep raising. You know, Mr. Daley's probably the only one that sees people on a, on a daily basis, but he doesn't talk politics down at the restaurant, and I don't blame him for not bringing that into his business. But get out and start getting to know your citizens. We expect, you know, that Washington DC and Washington State not to care about us, but you're supposed to be our neighbors, and you're supposed to act on our behalf. And I haven't seen it. For the two years I've been coming to these meetings, you just pretty much raise this and raise that, and it's okay, and yeah, I see all the paperwork, and so it's a good thing, but you don't know who you're working for. You don't have public meetings. We can come here to the city council meeting, but we're not supposed to even interact with you, and you're not supposed to interact with us. You don't have town hall meetings, you don't find out what the people are worried about, I can tell you their five, top five priorities are not yours, but you don't know that because you don't go talk to them. You know, and again, Mr. Daley's probably the only one that hears the bitching and moaning when he's at the little crane, and thank him for bringing it up when he comes to the city council meeting. But if you do anything else this year, and this is an election year, people, so please keep this in mind, get out and talk to these people, and get to know them, and find out the struggles that they're going through, because none of them could name three of you. And yeah, they could come here and they could get to know you, but you could go that way, too, that door works both ways.
Next.
Next, we have Donna Rogers.
Donna Rogers, Tenth Street, Veyrt. I was gonna ask about this new ordinance that Mike wanted to put in, but I didn't hear that brought up tonight, so, I'm, I'm just concerned about the wedding part of the menus, it's a little scary, because you're the only one in town I could see doing that, and I, that would create a huge amount of traffic when you have those venues, because I know there's sometimes hundreds of people that come to those. So, that's real concerning to me, considering I live across the street from you. And I wasn't there in person, but I heard this, and I know two people around the room that were there, about the intimidation of duty, and I'd love to see the mayor stop having secret meetings with council members on the side and intimidating them, and then telling them that they are not allowed to come in to city hall without permission, review, can't get any information unless they fill out Freedom of Information Act. I kinda think that might be illegal. And I, you know, you always, you're just a bully. You don't have any integrity, you don't have any ethics, and that includes some of the others sitting up there sometimes. So, that's about all I have to say for tonight.
Excellent.
Excuse me, I had your...
Yeah, council, care to hear another member?
I'm not sure if this is even the right...
You have three minutes, just to...
Three minutes?
Yeah.
East Street and Ten. On the side of my road, I've got some trees, and I believe it may be on the easement of the road. Who would I talk to about getting those possibly cut down or moved?
Well, you just come into city hall.
There has been something that fallen over, and like I said, I'm disabled, I can't really get out there and do that, I've been trying to keep them up, but, yeah. So, just come in the city hall, and great, thank you.
Perfect. Okay, and thank you. I know, as a member of the council, we would love to engage in a more clarifying conversation after public comment, but it's not standard operating procedure, so we thank those who have shared your perspectives. Absent any other agenda items, we'll be there, this council meeting closed at seven fifteen PM. Thank you all for being here.